I like to call the Wait on, is he coming? I want to call the Carlisle School Committee meeting to order. Thank you, welcome everybody. It's always nice to see a packed house, get used to that. We will start with public comments. Are there any public comments? Yes ma'am?
I have six questions for the school committee. I have them printed out if you would like me to pass them out to you.
You can give them to me, sure. Beth, you come late, you gotta stand.
Nice. Oh, thank you all. So each question has four parts.
Okay, we have sort of a time limit here.
Oh, sure. I know that the school committee only go for three hours.
Perhaps you want to give one to Cynthia? Do you have an extra?
Oh, I have to.
Therefore, she wants to.
My first question is a question that I asked in December. What is the impact of the teachers' request on the budget as a dollar per year and as a percentage of the budget? And whether the school committee requested this analysis? Number two, what are three different budget projections for the Carlisle Public School? And has the school committee requested this projection? Number three, what percentage of their health care do Carlisle Public Schools' teachers pay? Apologies for the title. What is the percentage other teachers pay in districts whose performance compares to Carlisle? And I have a list of two percent. Number four, who asked the teachers who are on the last year to receive bonuses in the Carlisle Public School? And what is the practice in districts whose performance compares to these two Carlisle? Number five, does the school committee intend to change the current structure of the teaching teams in the middle school from four licensed, highly qualified, I underlined, highly qualified teachers to a dyad model? And number six, and related to number five, given the steady increase of the student population illustrated by the graph below, what actions has the school committee initiated to maintain or increase enrollment? And what actions does the school committee intend to take in the future to maintain or increase enrollment?
Okay, thank you. Any other comments?
Should I expect an answer now or later?
No, we should not expect an answer.
At all?
Not directly in a public meeting.
Should I publish these questions in the paper?
Free to publish if you wish. The one comment I will make to you is that if you go to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education website, the DESI website, a lot of this information for all the districts is on that website. I think I've told you that before.
I'm very familiar, sir, but it is also your responsibility to have this information public. And this information is not public. The information regarding the Carlisle Public School.
Okay, thank you for your input.
Well, as far as not public, we do publicly share certain information.
I think we make all information public that should be public.
Well, I shall research it further.
Please do.
And I shall make it public in the local paper.
Mr. Olschka, if you would like to contact Superintendent O'Shea, he will be able to give you whatever information specifically pertaining to these questions that he's able to, that is, you know, publicly available. And I'm sure that he'll be happy to have that conversation with you.
Thank you so much.
Any other public comments? Okay, let's review the minutes from the meeting of December 12th.
I move to approve the minutes as distributed in the meeting of December 12th.
Any discussion? There are none? Do you have a comment?
Yes, there was just on the, I don't remember the exact line, but I'm ridding it over. There was a statement that the playing fields were not usable. And I think that's
It's in D.
Let's see. While they may not be ideal in certain seasons.
Did it say not usable?
They were not safe or something.
Around which part of this paragraph?
I think when we were talking to Margaret, was there some issue of safety?
Yes. Other area, right now, the front of Spalding is usable for some sports, but other areas are considered unsafe. My understanding is that there are times at which all fields are used and considered safe.
Where are you looking?
This is in page three of seven, section D, halfway down this paragraph. Right now, the front of Spalding is usable for some sports.
Well, is it Margaret's quote?
It's not a quote.
Not exactly a quote, but it's paraphrasing, I think, what she said.
You see the word "Spalding" with a question mark next to the margin.
Yeah, I mean, it should be clarified, I guess. It's my recollection. Margaret, are you here?
I think Margaret, I think she remarked.
I mean, we try to, the question is, I recall that you made the remark that some parts of the field are unsafe.
Correct.
And that's what we reported on. So maybe we should just clarify, Nancy, that Ms. Heigl indicated that or something. I mean, it's a statement of opinion that happens to be a highly educated opinion about it.
It's not only a highly educated opinion that we've had people walk the field preparing to tell us what we need to do to the field to bring it to a usable level. And this gentleman, I can't recall his name, mentioned that this field is totally unsafe and unusable.
Right. Well, we're going to, in the first, second discussion item today, revisit this issue. So right now, we're just trying to, and we'll take certainly your opinion at that point. I think all we want to do right now is capture the sense of what happened last month in the minutes. So I would just say, Ms. Heigl said, stayed here. Is that okay with you?
Yeah.
Okay. Any other comments on the minutes? Should we vote? All in favor?
I agree.
Okay, approved, thank you very much.
Thanks, Nancy.
Okay, Mr. Flannery's not expected.
So Mr. Flannery, after over forty-six years of reliable, faithful, outstanding service --
Yep. -- is not answering.
He's reluctant to come, I guess, I'm not sure. But it's kind of like the Long Rangers. Does a great job and he's not giving a good thing.
Well, I have, so I have two things, and others may want to join in. He did send us a note, a thank you note. We gave him a boxwood tree, I guess, thank you, Nancy. Sort of like my wife, when somebody gets a present and they thank me and I'm like, oh yeah. Thank you for the beautiful boxwood tree. It has adorned my home over the holidays and was enjoyed by my family during our annual gathering. I very much appreciate your thoughtfulness. It has been an honor and a pleasure working at the Carlisle Public School and my position over the past several decades. Best wishes and Happy New Year, David. So that's from David. I wrote up a short thing that I'll read into the record here, and then others can do it. I've known David professionally for fifteen years, virtually all of my time in Carlisle. I can divide this into two parts. For the first part, I was a Fincomb liaison to both the fire department and the school, and met with David many times on budget issues, especially regarding maintaining an on-call fire department. I was amazed at David's ability to juggle all his responsibilities and recite details from memory without notice. However, I did not really appreciate the work David has put into the community until the second half of our interactions, which were in my capacity on the school committee and David's CPS facilities director. David was truly dedicated to keeping the school's physical plant running smoothly and safely and almost always mindful of the budgetary impact. Given the many parts to that job, I almost forgot that his other day job was to run the fire department. But I know that he was dedicated to the same goals there, plus recruiting and motivating the volunteers that are so critical to our town's safety. David has left big shoes to fill on both sides, but at least as the school is concerned, I'm confident his legacy will be continued with Rob and his staff. Nevertheless, anyone who walks through the school doors each day, and the parents of children who walk through those doors, should take a moment to appreciate the effort David has given over the decades to keep the school clean, comfortable, and safe. David, we will miss you. So I hope David maybe tunes in at some point to do that, but in any case, thank you very much. Anybody else?
Well, I think that I worked with David a little bit in my capacity on the PTO, and like you, I was just always amazed at how much he could draw from memory. And he knows every nook and cranny of probably the entire town in terms of public buildings, and he will sorely be missed.
Good. Okay. All right, the next item is, again, the discussion of the community center proposal on Spalding Field. And we all got a copy of the Gail study from 2016 after last meeting. Now, I was expecting Jerry, or is anyone here from, you're here in that capacity?
Not dearly, I was just going to listen in, but Jerry Larmen is the representative.
I thought he was coming, or Peter, somebody was coming over here.
Or maybe he was.
Not, Peter, yeah, Peter said he would come as well. Okay, so maybe we should wait. Is he late?
It's like what he was expecting.
All right, so why don't we, why don't we hold off on that and move to this update on solar? Are you waiting for somebody for that as well?
Well, you know, so we met today, and we asked the engineer to come tonight, so that the school committee had additional questions about the proposal. You know, we'd have someone here to answer them, so.
We can talk about some of the changes to the proposal. What do you not want to get into, what are the steps?
Yeah, we can start.
Because those are significant when they roll out the new maps.
Sure, do you want me to just present, give the background?
Sure, why not?
And then talk about where we're at right now? And then we can shift gears when we need to? Okay. So the materials I have are, the first thing that I just want to remind everyone about the original proposal, this is what we talked about at the last meeting. And I don't know if anybody has a copy of this document, if you're, I don't know if you're going to be able to get it up on the screen, but if you recall, these were the canopies in the parking lot. This is the bus canopy. And this was a separate ground mount, which has been since, you know, dis, you know, since moved out of the running because of the amount of trees that would need to be cleared. So the change is essentially to the canopy, the ground mounts in the parking lot, or this bus canopy would be bigger. This is the new layout.
I revise that, okay.
They revised that. The small one here would be removed, so it's no longer there over where the stairs are when you come down to the parking lot from the stairs. And then there was an additional proposal of a canopy over the Spalding circle.
Oh, over where people drop their kids off in the morning?
Yeah.
And is that the one you're talking about, the separate project or roofed out?
So in addition, this is a separate discussion, but they did look at roof mounted. And because of the, because of the way the project was originally proposed, the RFP was really, didn't include anything that would be roof mounted, so that would be a separate process, a separate undertaking if we were going to pursue something that had roof mount height.
Did they give any hard numbers on your parking spots that would be?
So that's going to be a good question that we're going to need to, you know, we're going to need to find out how many parking spots, if any, would be lost or gained through the addition of these canopies. And then obviously the
How would you gain the parking spots?
They felt like some of it, I think some of the islands might, you know, because we have grassy areas there, those might disappear and it might allow for more parking. We'll see, when they come, we'll be able to, you know.
Is that the newer? So this is, I think this was the original, this was the last meeting?
So I just want to give a little bit more background. There's a timeline of events that really need to happen here. In this agreement, we're going to, Amarausco will be making use of some incentives for the SMART program. So there's a timeline really associated with that. The longer we push it out, those incentives are sort of decreasing. So in the interest of being, making, being able to make the most out of those incentives, we'd want to move this along so that we could have a targeted date of installation during the summer.
This summer?
This summer, yeah. So, you know, there are a few things that need to happen. Obviously, you know, this committee would need to evaluate and vote on the solar canopies. We also need to, the town council is assisting with drafting a lease agreement and a pilot payment, new taxes agreement between the town and Amarausco. And then there would need to be a bylaw change to solar.
Is it practical to have all those things happen in time for solar construction?
Well, these, so they feel, we as a committee felt that, yes, it could be. I mean, the three things that would need to be prepared for town meeting, which is April 29th, are the lease agreement, the pilot, and bylaw change. And obviously, this committee's vote and approval. So for the draft of those things to be ready for town meeting, we're looking at mid-March.
What are the three things again? Lease agreement, pilot, and bylaw change?
Lease agreement, the pilot, the bylaw change, school committee approval.
And all that would be a sort of town meeting-ish, right?
Yeah, March, we'd want
We wouldn't, but the town meeting would do the bylaws and
That would be the final, you know, that would be the votes would be taken there, but we'd want to have everything ready by March.
Right. So the issue of the, well, you can keep going, I will ask questions after.
Well
The paving?
Yeah.
Yeah, the paving, that's, you know, that's been incorporated into the plan, and I think when they come, we'll have, you know, obviously, we'll have some questions about that. But what I think that we need to determine, what is the extent that they have considered within their own project planning for paving? Because they're going to need to install the posts, so they're going to be tearing some area up. And so obviously, paving is going to be included with that project. What's the, what have they allocated for that? Another question I would have is if they're, you know, are they using prevailing wages in their estimates for whatever work is being done?
Who's a they, Amarausco?
Yeah. Because for any municipality, we have to pay prevailing wages.
So, go ahead.
Actually, a question about that. I know on any public buildings, we certainly have to. If we lease the land to a private entity, are they obligated for their construction to?
That's my question. Yeah. Because we are for the work that we would be doing. And because we haven't yet identified the scope of the paving project for our needs, we're going to need to do that. And we're going to need to marry it with whatever, you know, their proposal includes. So that's a question.
Is the sequence of things to, physical things to do, that you prep the parking lot and pave it, and then you start punching holes? Or you punch holes and pave around? Do you know?
Well, they're going to need to lay those posts in. So while I'm not the engineer, I'm assuming that they have to tear it up and get those in there, and then they're going to pave around.
So it reinforces the need to do it all on its strength, basically.
So I think I can't answer the questions as well as they can, and they are going to come, so now that Mr. Best is here from RecCom.
The two Peters are here, right?
And Peter's here.
Can I ask a more broad question to everybody on the committee, potentially those in our audience too? I'm not understanding what all the negatives are here. I understand we might lose parking spots there. Over time, it would become less efficient, they have to pave under it. What are the downsides that we need to be considering?
One question I would have is about long-term, you know, maintenance. If they're solely responsible for the maintenance and upkeep of those canopies, which I assume they would be since we're leasing the land to them, I think that, you know, that was what
What happens at the end of the lease type of?
Well, that's another question.
What's the, did you sense remember what the oldest project, in other words, where's the reference we could go to that's had a project for a while? Or is it all pretty?
And we asked them to bring some information. Jonathan DeCock is here also from the committee. So we asked them to bring, and they did send some renderings of, you know, what it might look like. And they've also sent us, shared some pictures of projects that they did. And then they'll be able to talk more extensively about, you know, other work that they've done.
Jonathan, did you want to add?
Just the RFP and the lease agreement that's out there so far does explicitly specify that they need to maintain it throughout its life, and they need to deconstruct it and put things back to the way it was at the end of 20 years unless we opt to continue the lease with them.
Oh, great.
I do think there are some aesthetic questions we may consider as we look at, they came today with a very different proposal than we looked at initially. And you can see they're looking at putting an array over the Spalding lot, which is right out there, which we hadn't really thought of. And there's also another, I don't know if you shared, the roof, they're also looking at putting rooftop units on Spalding, which we have to look into and make sure that that's feasible.
Are these units pitched on the top?
Yeah.
And what happens to the water?
We had a long discussion about water draining up in the pitch. So they're pitched, but there's spaces in between, so it's not, it's not going to be a massive runoff at any one space. The space is in between each solar panel, so there's, I think you described bigger drops, but less frequently.
Right. So the spaces between, when it rains, you would drip off the edge of the panels, right? They're a little bit tilted, like, one is one degree, they were going to say, and then another set of panels is seven degrees. So they're not very tilted.
Still, there's a large area that's draining to a single line, which could be a lot of water.
Could be a lot of water, but so at least the ones over the parking areas would have spaces between them and panels that's tilted three foot by six foot. And so each panel would drip around it, right? What we did ask them about today was if they could do something to manage that, particularly in the bus area, so that the kids, when getting on and off the bus, aren't dripped on. I don't know if you guys think that's the idea, but I brought it up.
Probably a good idea.
And the other thing that they, so the way they described the ones over the parking in the car, on the parking lot, over the cars is a sort of, it's a Y. So it's pitched this way, and so the water that's running would be in the center where the cars are parked, nose in. So you wouldn't be, so this is the parking, nose in, right?
You're going to tell you, you're staying on the wrong spot, or you have to run through that spot quickly.
Yeah, so it's this way, and the cars are
But theoretically, you could gutter it, couldn't you?
I believe so, but I didn't say.
Floor is a moron.
But one of the nice things about the way they're putting out arrangements as a Y is that stuff like snow and ice would go towards the center of it, and so it won't land on people going to their cars.
Jonathan, so the panels that they're proposing over the Spalding play area?
No, that's actually over the parking area.
The circle?
The circle parking.
The drop off? Oh, circle next to the plaza.
That's the one closest.
Is there one over the plaza though?
No.
No. The really large one is over the bus area.
Okay, now I get it. Okay, thank you.
So this is like it's over the sidewalk? This is not the fence?
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, it's over like the area and the grass around it and stuff. They, based on the discussion that you had last time with them, making sure that it didn't impact traffic flow, they made that one bigger so that their posts could be outside of the traffic flow and outside of the sidewalks.
If it's over the grass, what does that mean for the future of the grass?
It's wet. Well, it doesn't get wet.
It gets less light, so.
But it is
You're going to replace it with artificial.
Yeah.
So those are some of the
Right, those are some of the potential downsides.
But I mean, that's sort of a, I think, when we asked them when they were here about rooftop, the answer that we got was, it's not practical. But now they've decided that it is practical, or it might be practical?
Well, I don't think, so what came out of that discussion today was that when the original Solar Energy Task Force was evaluating solar in Carlisle, that school was being built at the time, so it wasn't a part of the evaluation. So we don't really know, actually, if that particular building, you know, we would have to evaluate that.
No, but one of the engineers who was here indicated that they had studied it and
The Energy Task Force has studied it, not Amarausco. So the Energy Task Force, when they studied it, they came back with the conclusion that it was not structurally sound enough.
For which building? Not the new one, right?
For all of the flat ones.
Presumed, I presume.
The flat ones.
But Spalding is not
So it wasn't that building.
Spalding is new, but it was not evaluated.
Okay, so it's possible that they think it might be.
They decided not to evaluate it because of the protrusions, but a few holes.
But now, I don't know, what are they coming back with in terms of the latest rooftop? Is it for Spalding?
This is for, yeah.
Okay, so what do the protrusions do to that? I guess they have to dance around it.
The satellites, yeah.
So process-wise, for Spalding, does the town have to put out RFP again, go through that process, solicit bids, quotes? And if so, is it on a completely different timeline than the rest of the budget?
That's what I'm, that's what I'm hearing, yeah. That's what I
So that'll probably be the next phase.
I don't think that we'd be able to hit that by the town meeting.
No. However, town meeting doesn't need to worry about that because we already have as a variety ability to put things on the roof.
Up to whatever the school uses, right?
Right, yeah, there's some limitations on that.
Okay, so different process, separate process, but maybe not necessarily a timeline constraint.
So on the town vote, which would be required to amend bylaws to include the school and the solar overlay district, would that be the only town buy-in required? Or is, so, what else?
We need to get support from all the various boards. So the planning board would need to do the site plan review, the school committee would need to do their reviews, the board of selectmen would have to do their reviews. I'm sure I'm missing some.
So is that
And I think it's important to note too that this is part of a larger initiative because the school is one component. We're talking about that tonight here because this is the school committee, but there's additional refusal as part of this project to put solar canopies at the transfer station. So I think it's just important to note.
Are they, I guess, to build on the question, are the boards all going to do the bylaws as a package then? Is it your understanding they'll, the overlay of the transfer, or maybe that's what we've done, and this and the roof, just kind of
The bylaw change? Well, the solar overlay district is now Can you recognize him, Jim, he knows the planning board, you can talk about the bylaw?
Yeah, solar overlay district right now is limited to the transportation. So leave the only bylaw item come in front of us for is for expansion of that into the school, right?
Yes, and also there's a height specification on the bylaw, and canopies would be taller than that, so those two items will be adjusted.
Correct.
Town council is in the process of figuring out how to update the bylaw.
Yeah, and this is fairly common, we do this quite often too, these bylaws, so it will require a two-thirds majority of town meeting to pass, but that's the only gate where the whole community will be involved. Now, from the site plan review, that's, it's still a byright construction, so they would come in front of the planning board for site plan review, and it would be a public meeting, a public hearing, so that we could just hear and recommend things like impact on parking, screening, things like that, and placement of it, but it's not something that the town has to approve again a second time.
Is it, so is it practical in your mind, Peter, to get all these ducks landed?
It is, yes.
And you're, I think you guys hear that?
Yeah, so we have Rob from Amarausco.
Rob Jackson, Amarausco, creative director of all of them.
And Eric Zimmerman from the solar committee as well.
Do you want to ask questions?
So we started a little bit early with the discussion, and we were just going over the proposed, the new proposed canopies.
Okay.
Where there were some questions. First question was about the parking spaces. Have you had a chance to evaluate whether there'll be an increase or decrease in the number of parking spaces with the proposed solar rate?
We have not at this point. We're, Rob's looking at those costs at this point for our discussion at the last meeting, including paving and all that, so that's probably what we're looking at at this point.
Okay, so that is one of the questions that the committee has.
Could you evaluate, would have the landscape, would be affected?
Not exactly at this point. I haven't gone to, you know, visual screening or, you know, something like that, but that's part of, you know, several environmental portion of things, and that's upcoming very shortly, part of the project.
Rob, what's, if we wanted to kind of get a reference from you, can you, what's like the oldest customer, in other words, what's the earliest project that's comparable to this? How many years ago did you build this?
Personally, I've been involved in Massachusetts solar market for ten years, and that's pretty much what the market has been. And the firm that I work for, you know, we've been doing solar since 2001, when the company was first initiated. So the Great Communities Act rules for a lot of
I mean, we probably want to talk to somebody that's been a customer about how the aging process of the physical stuff went.
Yeah.
Do you think you could provide that to us?
We could, yeah, definitely, definitely.
So Amarausco would maintain the structures throughout the life of the lease, right?
Right, we would, we're a firm that prefers to have a long-term, or a long-term situation and long-term ownership. We're a firm that prefers to have a long-term, a long-term situation and long-term ownership structure. And so that's how we've structured the deal. And so we'll be, you know, we'll build, we'll originate, we'll develop, we'll construct, and we'll operate the solar array through the lifetime of the project.
And were there some questions about the water runoff? Or we talked a little bit about that, about the shape of the canopies over the parking area and the pitch.
Yep.
So are there any other questions about that?
What is the effect on kids walking underneath it when it's raining?
Right.
And is it completely dry, or you get to the edge and you're suddenly soaked? Or is it something in between? How does that work? Is it possible to gutter it?
Yes.
Already the pavement is impervious, so you can run it off somewhere else anyways.
We had a good discussion earlier today at the town hall, and so we got those comments. Certainly over where the buses would run, that's where we would focus water management. Water management, obviously, adds a bit to the cost. So we would focus on that area where the kids are gonna be, so we don't obviously, you know, impact any of the buses and the kids, you know, that are coming through there. In other areas, we, you know, there's kind of separation between the panels, I guess, and the carport. So there's not like water gushing off of these things. It's kind of just a little bit of dripping and that sort of thing. But they are gonna be shaped in kind of like a Y configuration, so that it kind of diverts the dripping to more the center point. And, you know, so in these parking lots, you know, we would, I guess, propose not doing as much water management there as you would where it's really important, where we're dropping out kids, basically.
What about lighting? Anything to give a light?
Lighting is part of, yeah, obviously, a very important part of it. And included in all of our canopies, certainly. And there was kind of a consideration of, you know, not too much light, but enough light so you can see and navigate, you know, the parking lot as well at night. But also not too bright of a light for the surrounding residents as well. So that's what we'll consider in design as well.
How wide is the widest column post that's supporting this?
You know, probably no more than a foot, I would think.
So it doesn't create significant blind spots where...
No, no, it's the supports. I think it's about four supports on this one over the bus. And then the number will have to be figured out, but it won't be a significant blind spot, I guess, is, you know...
Kids walking in, cars driving in.
Right. Right, yeah. And I mean, obviously, the poles will be outside the light of way, so there would be no chance of running into it.
So there was some additional pictures on making a... We see just sort of the... The engineer sent me some photos of the canopies.
Just one other point of caution, when it came with the new plans today, and you expanded... Expansion isn't necessary in order to make this happen, because if you expand it, you're not gonna have the solar canopy of the transfer station.
Right, yes.
But with the transfer station, we don't need to have this one.
I'm showing them, I took some, actually, my daughter took a couple of pictures. We were at a, my son had a basketball game. It's either Marlboro or a neighbor's.
Maybe if you turn the light out.
Yeah, maybe. At least that, she sent a picture of that really large one. That's probably comparable to where...
There we go, that's great.
Yeah, that's accurate.
That one up there, that might be similar to what the bus canopy would look like.
That's exactly right. And we tried to situate that low blind, so, you know, where people were standing, I guess. Obviously, there'd be water management there, so that we're diverting from that area where people might be, were walking by.
So I think, I was talking to Melinda a little earlier today about this process. So for us to vote on approval, we should make sure we're clear on whatever questions we need answered. So I think the two that I know and that you've heard are a higher fidelity estimate of the number of parking spots that might be lost. Parking does get pretty jammed up, probably don't have sufficient ones as it evolves. And the second one is just really clarifying that you've worked out the paving piece of it, is at least from our view. And is Rob doing this too? Maybe Rob's looking into this.
Rob's looking into it with Gary Davis, or he had a quote from paving and...
Right, so I guess you're getting some support from the town side to give you, so you don't have to scramble around and get the numbers. But I think we would need a commitment that's been rolled into the economics. Those are the two that I have. Anybody else? Let's be specific, and if you can get Melinda and Jim those answers before the next meeting. Because I think, and I don't want to say this for sure, but we probably want to get them voted next meeting, because that way, if it's a go, you know, there's all kinds of things that have to happen to get the water in for town meeting. So we could possibly go two meetings, but we shouldn't, yes.
On the paving, I think it's gonna be important for the school committee to explain to Amaresco what you guys really want.
Yeah, so this committee needs to identify the entire scope of work for what, where we want that paving to, what we want done. So that's where we've started the conversation between Gary and Rob.
Right, so I think it's on us to do that. So I guess, Jim, make sure that that should kind of happen sooner rather than later, so that these guys... I think it's important that Rob and you, particularly you and Gary, specify what the scope and the cost of paving would be, so that Amaresco can fold that into their study.
And Dave?
Yes, sir.
I don't think originally the array over Spalding was in the project.
This is the next thing to talk about, is, you know, this is a new proposal, and I think that's it.
Because then you need a Butters historical commission.
That's the Spalding, the building one.
This Spalding lot at the circle.
Oh, okay. Oh, I see, okay. Well, I mean, I guess I gotta turn back to Peter Gambino who wakes them. So I mean, there was a point raised, if we incorporate Spalding Circle, then you get a Butters. And when I asked you, can you get it all done, I assume you...
Well, he hasn't, he didn't see this at all.
Regardless of the project, when we do site plan review, it's a public hearing. We're gonna have to do a noise to a Butters. The site plan review, it's on the town to do, and usually the planning board office will pick that up and do it. So, and it doesn't matter if it's Spalding Circle or the opposite side of the property, your Butters list is generated from the property itself, the parcel.
Yeah, I defer to the planning board on the mechanics. My question's just, are you confident you can get it all done?
Yeah, we, yeah, we're pretty confident. Jonathan is coming to our meeting on Monday, and we're gonna hopefully get that process rolling.
So let's finish up. Are there any other specific questions that we need to address in time for, to consider voting next?
Melinda? Well, there was a sense during the discussion that this particular array, because it's so close to, you know, these homes here, that it might not be, it doesn't have the same impact as canopies in the parking lot there.
What does that mean, impact?
Aesthetically.
Means it doesn't look as good, or it doesn't matter?
It doesn't look...
I would say, I would say a couple of those. One, I don't think it'll look as good. Two, it may not matter, because they extended it, they weren't gonna have the solar array at the transfer station. But with the transfer station, they don't need that. And at this point, correct me if I'm wrong, we can't get a real, you know, what, how much... If we extend the solar, does that bring more money to the town or less, or what that dynamic is?
Right, what's the trade-off?
We're not sure what the trade-off is. So all those being the case, I think we can move on, we should move on.
So your recommendation is, let's just take the parking lot as the main parking lot, as a package. Fold in the paving cost and see if the economics work for that as a standard.
With the transfer station.
With the transfer station. Spalding Circle, I don't think needs to be, hey, I mean...
No, no, not...
We would just do this, and then in future phases, I presume, we could look at the Spalding building, if that's still on the table. And this as different projects, so.
I just think for, you know, aesthetic impact, it...
It doesn't look as nice way.
Right, that's...
Now, what I was gonna say, I looked up the town calendar there. Wayland High, did you guys do Wayland High School?
Yes.
Very attractive. I showed these guys pictures, I was impressed with these things. Okay, I think anything else is...
Jonathan has something?
Just one more comment, David. In addition to the site plan review and the various boards, I think we're gonna also try to hold some public hearings with the negotiating team, so that the public can communicate directly to the negotiating team and to Amaresco.
Okay.
So we're trying to make sure we do this, you know, as far right.
Okay.
And that will also have a community education component to it. So there'll be some work done before, you know, town meeting. People already know, you know, the relevant information about this project.
What's your timing of that?
I'm hoping for February.
Okay. So I mean, from, again, from our standpoint, since we only meet once a month, I want to be cognizant of the timing needed for us to weigh in and...
You did bring up a few issues, David. There were some questions I asked, which I said, we're looking at it. I'd like it to be looked at and presented by that time as well, including things such as the water and the landscaping.
So maybe you should write those questions down, and Melinda's sort of the liaison on this.
So what I have is, you know, question number of parking spaces. We asked for references from previous customers, water management, where do we want it? Where are you proposing to put the water management? How does that impact people? And I think we didn't have, we asked about lighting, but we understand that there will be lighting, so that's not. And then...
Landscaping.
Landscaping. Okay, and that what I'd like to give them before they leave is a sense of, you know, this is what we talked about today, and what is the sense of this committee, that this is where we want to land with this, and that this isn't under consideration at this time.
I'm okay with the Spalding Circle too, I think it's all, I'd be okay with it.
I'm okay with Spalding Circle, but I take Jim's point, if it becomes... It probably, it may be a little more complicated than your analysis, but it's probably better if you look at this as a... The main parking lot is a standalone, and then a package including that. So if there are too many concerns about Spalding Circle, you already still have your economic model of that. And I mean, that way we have...
I'll throw another idea out there, Christine, credit for it. If you do something near Spalding Circle, potentially the closet can get very hot.
When the kids are playing.
What's really hot? The closet, the paved playground gets... So to the extent that there's some small fraction that could be sheltered, you know, with a fence, maybe a bench or something, it could be, that could be an advantage.
Right, okay. Okay, thank you very much for coming. I guess you can convey those emotions.
All right.
All right, so we took, for those of you who've come late, we took the solar ahead of Spalding Field study, because not every, the people that needed to be here aren't here, weren't here, but now Mr. Best is here.
At least one of them is here.
You're representing...
RecCom.
RecCom?
Yes.
And Peter Gambino, you're representing...
CCYBS.
CCYBS. And COA is not here, but...
No, I got a message saying that he has bronchitis, and he doesn't want to affect everybody, so.
So, all right. So I think it would, you know, a lot was sort of thrown at us at the last meeting, and we heard, you know, a variety of opinions about the use of, the current use or overuse of Spalding Field as it is now, and some time pressure, let's say, to decide whether it's worth using the CHINA grant money to evaluate Spalding Field as a possible site for the recreation center, or is it a nonstarter, and should you just move on? I mean, that's kind of...
Correct.
We were also, we also talked to, a little bit, to the teachers here who represent the school athletic department, particularly Margaret, the director, and heard that, you know, the fields get a lot of use. And I know Peter's gonna stand up and say, not only school, but, you know, lots of other activities obviously get a lot of use. And we were directed to the study, the GALE study from 2016, which I read today. And the takeaway from my standpoint anyway is, you know, Spalding's pretty heavily used, as in overused. So that's kind of where it was, and I thought what we should do is kind of circle back on all this stuff and see if, again, is it worth even continuing? Or is the conclusion that Spalding is, you know, so heavily used, it would be silly to cut into the field space?
I'll stick to the last meeting, and I'll say again, I think we need to preserve every inch of the playing field, because we use it. If there's a proposal that allows that and allows a community center waterfall, I haven't heard how that's gonna happen, though.
I'm really glad that we got this GALE study, because it, you know, it shed a light, light on some misinformation, I think, going around. You know, one was that the fields are underutilized, and I think that, you know, the state of them being need to be repaired is really born out of the fact that they are used very often. And we don't have enough playing fields in town to, you know, give those fields recovery time between uses. So, and the second question that, you know, that came before this committee was whether there was any possibility of expanding, you know, on Spalding Field and using another area of it for another use while maintaining the current fields that we have, which are, you know, not spread out enough, they have to overlap. And this report says, due to this Spalding parcel being surrounded by environmentally sensitive areas and topography, there is little or no room for expansion. So I, you know, I think we already knew that. I mean, the fields are overlapping, it's not ideal. Sometimes you can't use two of them at the same time because of that, so... I mean, for me, that answered the questions of whether this should be considered as a site.
Christine?
I have to say, I hate to stop a project, but I think that the study and the fact that it's very well-used, and I think that we need to be prudent about the space that we do have. I just think it would be risking the future and...
Well, and to say, I don't want to say to, you know, to stop a project, because I wanna, I guess I didn't, yeah. I guess I didn't say upfront that I...
The location option.
Not...
Right, but the location option.
That I'm also a part of that community center committee, and I believe that a community center would be a tremendous asset to Carlisle, you know. And, but I think that, you know, we need to take that in a broader, we need to take a broader view. You know, originally, the community center was conceived, you know, with sort of a narrower scope as a senior center. And it didn't have, you know, quite the same buy-in as I believe an intergenerational community center will have, that serves the needs of, you know, all the generations in Carlisle. And I think if we are looking at it from that broad point of view, then we definitely need to consider, you know, the sighting of it. And anything that diminishes the resources that our school has, which are already limited in terms of outdoor space, you know, is not looking at that big picture, so.
Jim, did you have a chance to talk with...
Yeah, so in speaking with the team, I think everyone's highly motivated by any conversation that generates the possibility of having those fields repaired, because they're a challenge, right? As Mari will attest, that's what we're interested in. But there's a great deal of fear or concern that we would lose an inch of those fields, right? The fields are vital to, whether it's spring, fall, PE, intramurals, intermurals, rec days, field days. Those fields are used, and that's just the school usage, that's just our usage. So that's a concern. As much as we like the idea of focusing on repairing those fields, the idea and the possibility of going in that direction is...
So I definitely think we need to separate these two conversations. I think the possibility of returning, of repairing those fields is real, has nothing at all to do with the community center, right?
Well, no, I wouldn't... If we build a community center on it, we're probably not gonna repair it.
Well, right, well, that's what I'm saying, is like, the argument that came to me was, if we do the community center, we might have a chance in there to bundle in the repair of the fields. Well, I think we're gonna be doing that anyway. I mean, I went in front of RecCom on Tuesday, was it? No, Monday?
Tuesday.
Whatever.
Monday, yeah.
Monday, it was Monday. And they actually have now agreed at this point to start investing some money on a study about how we can do it. The number that they brought up was 15,000, and we got, we got the okay from them to go ahead and start this process.
This study, the GALE study from three years ago, two years ago, was, I think, I didn't reproduce that page, but I think it's at least 50,000.
Yeah, but this isn't a study like the GALE study, this is a very specific technical study about the, about the field quality and what's underneath there, and what would, what would we have to do to get an estimate to repair those fields?
Oh, you mean the 15,000 is to get an estimate?
Yeah, to get an estimate, right. Because what it is, is that, I've already had people, I've been working on this for about two years now, trying to get something done and get in the works repairing. We had a guy that came out and looked at it in specific terms of the softball field, and he came back and said, unless you're gonna do all of it, don't consider doing one field.
All of it as in all the fields?
Meaning a multipurpose field, the field hockey field.
But everything on Spalding, not just Spalding?
Right. And the main problem... Yeah, everything on Spalding, right. And the main problem is, is that we are a little worried about the soil stability underneath, and that's why we need to spend a little money on the study, to go down and find out across the property, what is, what's the soil quality, and what do we really have to do to fix it right, so that five, ten years from now, we're not dealing with more sinkholes and things like that, so.
So this is the other reason why I'm really glad that this, that we got the GALE study. I hadn't seen this before, but, you know, I think that this really elevates to everyone's attention what, you know, what the athletics department at the school has been saying, or RecCom's been saying for years. Hey, you know, we really need to do something about repairing these fields. Our town uses them a lot. We need them. And so I think, you know, based on the discussion that RecCom had on Monday, I think this committee should support their efforts, whatever they are, to bring those fields into their glorious
I'm sure we would. I think to Peter's point, though, let's stay focused for now. So, the issue on the table is, is whether we deem the CHINA REC multi-generational center project a nonstarter with regard to Spalding or not, right? That's really the thing on the table. If we, once we are past that, if that's the right word, yeah, of course.
So, so one of the things that I had in my presentation, but you guys are still in probably about eighty percent of the thunder, because you're already all over the issues that I was gonna present, but the biggest thing I had here were maps showing why we are one of them, right? Spalding is the only open space for this school. There's nothing else around. It's either private or hardscape, and there's nothing to expand to. And then Spalding itself has wetlands on the southeast edge, opposite the school, and a fifteen-foot grade, or basically a twelve percent slope going up to the school. Both those things take about ten acres, and they make it in about four and a half usable. If you look at the size requirement for one single nine-foot softball field, or baseball field, that's four and a half acres. So I don't believe, I truly don't believe, and I think the GILE report backs it up, that there's any possible way we could add a building with parking to that property and not lose an inch of space. You know, that's just the physics of the topology there.
This doesn't, this doesn't sync with community center project.
No, it's just a question of whether.
If it's gonna go to Spalding.
This just started out, you know, this group was discussing the site that was purchased, the Mosley Land, the golf property, and the back of that was designated as an area that would hold a community center for this community. So, you know, that's, that was the primary focus at the outset. This was a sort of, kind of, like, oh, well, what if, I wonder, type of question, which we're, which I would like to answer tonight, you know.
So let me ask you this. Would you like to answer in the form of an informal suggestion or in the form of a vote?
I would like to vote.
Have a motion ready?
Yeah, so I'll make a motion that the school committee vote that Spalding Field should be retained for Town Athletics and would not consider the construction of a community center at this time.
School and Town Athletics.
School and Town Athletics, correct.
A second.
I'd like to hear if any of the teachers wanna weigh in on anything different than what you've already heard with regard to the use of Spalding?
I'd like to make additional comment to, I know Holly's here from RecCom, and one of the things that Holly was, you know, really interested in is expanding the recreation programs. And I think that building a community center in town is gonna give RecCom an opportunity to expand its offerings, and I think that would be fantastic. I know one of the things that was a concern was, you know, getting kids to that site in an efficient way. And I, you know, did a little bit of research, and I found that the Carlisle School now buses about fifty kids to the Carlisle Kids' House, which is like less than half a mile from the school. And I think, you know, those kids getting bussed there, they get off at the driveway, and the instructor meets them there and takes them to the building. It's actually more ideal than an instructor parking somewhere else, walking to the school, waiting in the cafeteria for kids to come out. And then if you have a lot of programs, you have fifty kids, and then you're walking them somewhere else. So I think, you know, just as one of the concerns that RecCom had, I hope that the idea of busing kids there, you know, helps to allay that concern about it being within walking distance. And the Mosley property is actually in really good walking distance, especially for the middle school kids, 'cause they often go to Kimball's, and it's right across the street from Kimball's.
Holly, would you like to respond?
You know, it's, again, this was really just something that, you know, at the meeting we said, again, what if, what if we put something there? It's close to the school, it's close to the library, close to all these things, right in the center of town. And that's really how the whole field, putting on Spalding, came about. You know, we have Mosley transportation issues. We're gonna have to cross that bridge when we get there. You know, but it was really just to see, you know, if this is going to be a good site. And at our meeting on Monday night, one of our board members, Mark Spears, who's been on our commission for quite some time, you know, is concerned about the quality of the land at Spalding. And so we are talking about doing an engineering study to see what can actually go on that land. Because we are concerned, because it's swamp and built, and the field, there's a bill there that even if we did a turf field there, is that going to sink? So that's kind of where we're coming from. So, I don't know if a community center can fit on that property as well as a turf field, which could, you know, resolve many of the school's issues. And that's kind of where the study was coming from. What can we put there?
You're talking about the CHINA study, or?
No, this is what I was bringing up.
Your fifteen thousand dollars.
The study to look at the land, the soil quality.
So I agree, I agree with you. I think if I understand what you're saying, and I made that point last meeting, that the, I forget the name of the company that?
The GALE study?
No, what's the latest one?
Abacus.
Abacus. That, oh, Abacus wasn't gonna do any of that, right? They were simply gonna size the building and the parking and kind of pop it into a couple different maps, right?
Yes.
So it wouldn't, I mean, that, that is a useful piece of information, because it would give people a sense of how much footprint it would take, but it wouldn't at all address whether it's even feasible, you know, engineering-wise to put it there, right?
Right. I think if we were to go with this and just look at this particular site, it would show us what can go on here. And then obviously further investigation must be done on, can building actually even go on that site?
Right, and we don't.
So I think that's really the purpose of it. It's not really, you know, we're definitely putting a community center here. It's just, how much space, how much useful space is there, and let's really, let's really take a look at it.
So, I mean, to flip it around to Melinda's point, if we assume, as it seems like we're trending towards saying, "Please don't put it on Spalding," and you mentioned, you know, Melinda mentioned some transportation options to, what do you call it now? Golf? We don't call it golf anymore.
Mosley.
Mosley property. And you said cross-over, Jimmy, come to it, but same, a different set of practical things, but is that practical in your mind? Through some combination of kids walking, busing, whatever, is that a practical?
I am grateful for any space that is open to recreation. So, and I will work and get, you know, some technicals to then get kids over there if that's where it ends up being, so.
Okay, thank you, yes. So I just wanna circle back to one thing that you said before. The idea that we should couple repairing the fields with a community center, I think, is mistaken. The two are not tied together. Except that, we would, if we put a community center there, we would not have the fields to repair. And my concern is for the long term, that we may not repair the fields this year. We may not repair them next year. But what about the next generation?
Someday we will.
Someday we will. And that's my, that's why I think we should not.
I think I understand that. Are there any further comments from the committee? Okay. And I guess the motion is to?
Retain Spalding.
In other words, reject the option of building community centers. So a yes vote means no building on Spalding, right?
Retain Spalding for school and athletics and town athletics.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. So I guess there's the answer. Thank you.
Good.
Well, it's clear. It's clear now. Thank you for the time and the effort. Okay, so the, do I have the wrong package? Okay, Banta Davis. Sure.
So I think we left the last meeting, and we were just, we had some questions about the abutters. So we reached out to two abutters we identified, the Mosleys.
Did you reach both of the?
And the Nobles. Yes, we did. And actually, Warren Spencer, the Trails Committee, was kind enough to go out and mark the new trails so that they could have an idea of where the trail would actually be. And I believe after seeing that, the abutters don't have any concerns. Correct answer?
Right.
No concerns.
Okay, that's wonderful. The Mosleys and who's the other party?
The Nobles.
The Nobles, yeah, good Carlisle thing. So, I think I'm good. I mean, if they have no concerns, then that was the issue.
We have a concern.
So should we make a motion to accept the Trails Committee's proposal to move the Banta Davis Trail?
I'll make a motion to accept the Trails Committee proposal to move the Banta Davis Trail.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? Does anyone in the audience have any input on that? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Warren.
Thank you.
Yeah, that was very helpful to do.
Thank you very much.
Okay, bye-bye.
I appreciate it.
Okay, good. All righty. So, school calendar, understanding?
All right, my apologies. Yeah, so I moved the school calendar out of the agenda. The school calendar came out of the committee, but the teachers haven't had a chance to vote on the calendar yet.
Okay.
So it's here. My apologies for chipping.
What's your timing? Last year, we were accused of dragging our heels, so.
Well, and that was the interesting thing. Last year, this was on the agenda in the January meeting, and that's, that's why I felt we were expedite-ing it a little. We had earlier meetings, but I think the teachers will have an opportunity to vote on it this month, and we'll have that feedback. So, immediately after.
Does anyone wanna feed, give the school committee feedback now?
Yes, we did parent surveys before, and overwhelmingly they preferred not to start before September. We're giving up, based on this, two, six days of summer vacation in the interest of two days of classes.
Okay.
So I don't think that's, doesn't sound like a good plan.
I compared this calendar to the Contra-Carlisle calendar, and they're very, 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 very similar, which is great.
Okay, so that's a yes and a no. So, well, and?
I mean, I can walk through the calendar, since we're here, I can walk through the calendar and talk about the start date and dates, some of the days we have off. So I think some of the, so as we, we know it's been a conversation before Labor Day, post Labor Day, we did discuss that deeply in the committee meeting, and really based on some of the same information we had from last year and the years previously that we decided, the committee voted to have a day start before Labor Day and have the extended Labor Day weekend, just for the idea of students becoming more acclimated over that course of that time, and then jumping into classes once they're ready. Understanding that while last year we had a late end, and we have been lucky this year we haven't had any snow days, and we do have a plan in place to address hopefully snow days as they approach, that the early days were more beneficial, beneficial instructionally than the later days in the year.
But potentially, if we, if this works out for us, potentially, we, you know, we get very good at it, then we could look at a later, an after-Labor Day start.
Yeah, and I think, I think someone, possibly you brought up an idea that I shared with the committee, that, yeah, we could look at a later, an after-Labor Day start for everyone, teachers, students, if we are able to successfully do that. That was the conversation I had with the committee, and it was, we wanted to see this play out one year before we consider.
Right, and to understand the bigger picture.
What did you want to plan for the year?
To see how the snow day, and to see how things end this year, before we make a decision about next year, at which point we could do that for faculty and families.
Right, right.
Post-Labor Day, have both, both the two professional days after Labor Day and then the start. That would be the conversation of the committee next year.
Because that's the other consideration, right? That the first day of school for kids is not the first day of school actually for teachers. Teachers are back to school before, two days before.
Would any teachers like to comment? Have you seen the calendar? I assume we've seen?
Well, they haven't, they haven't had a chance.
They haven't seen the calendar.
That's where I'm not gonna.
No, maybe comments on pre- and post-Labor Day start.
I think it's good that we have the committee, it has representatives of the teachers, and they share that. Oh, yeah, this, the committee, this administration, teachers working together. Other dates from the calendar worth notice, professionally conference day is on October 23rd and December 11th, which would be two days without school. The first winter, the first winter break will include December 23rd as a no-school day. That would be the Monday before the 24th, which is the day off from school. So.
So we normally have off 24th, but not the 23rd, so this, because it's a Monday, it would incorporate the full week.
Both in the interest of making the calendar more efficient, and in making use of parent time and teaching time more efficient, I suggest moving the conferences to evenings instead of daytimes or afternoons.
So I think our conferences are scheduled in a way where they are days and evenings. It's, the teachers meet with parents.
They're off when the days, the kids aren't in school the day, so they're starting in August.
The students aren't in school because that is a workday for teachers. The conference day and conference evening is considered a workday for teachers, yeah. So to have them do a six-day work week might be more than.
It's the same number of days in the year that need to be done, right?
Correct.
So if we can find a way to do it that doesn't eat the summer vacation, and then still works with the parent schedules for when they're available to meet with teachers.
But Josh, would you be asking teachers to come in and teach in the morning, and then have a half a day, and then do conferences, and then go to dinner, and then come back and do conferences?
Yes.
I think that's another long day.
Which is, so right now, what they do is they don't teach in the day, so they have conferences in the day, and they're accessible for parents who wanna come in Tuesday night or even Wednesday night, like, they're accessible.
Anyway, is this the point?
Well, I think.
It was one of their hundred and eighty-five days.
But, I mean, the issue that's driving all of this is not wanting to repeat last year's issue of ending at the edge of June.
Well, that's one of, and the issue that drives which, the conversation.
Let me finish my point, I'm sorry. So, my sense of this little discussion about repurpose, or, you know, getting teaching and parent conferences in one day and these various things, and in fact, when you start in the beginning of the year is mostly with a focus of when do you end, especially if you have a snowy winter. And, because at the end of the day, as you said, it's the same hundred and eighty days, and, you know, there's lots of pockets of days that could be used, but whether kids get out earlier in June or later in June, it's, you know, there's a lot of flexibility as long as you meet the requirement. So my point that I, is that you've spent a considerable amount of time and effort to develop these snow day, these home husky learning days. We haven't had a chance to try that. We should try that, and we should see how good that is. If that's good, like, you know, we talked about last meeting, or, I forget where he's from, but the superintendent says it's the home way of learning. I mean, that may.
Just in any way without snow, they just.
Maybe that problem, those problems go away. We don't have to do either of those things. We don't have to.
We're perfectly, we're waiting to try it, but we haven't had the snow, which is good.
Maybe that's good.
Well, I mean, do you want, do you wanna try? I guess what David's saying is that the other, just to did it.
Well, that's another issue. You could try it. You could try it.
Do you wanna try? I mean, it's.
Well, let's get through, let's get through, you know, the month, we're doing the cheaper stuff.
It'll snow eventually, don't worry.
Yeah, we'll have a chance.
It will eventually snow. There'll be a chance. So, all I need to say is, I don't think we need to, I think we need to under, my opinion, we need to understand how that works, and that's effective, and then we can.
Well, that's one of the ways that we can.
No, but that's the one we first started with, so why don't we try it?
I'm not saying we shouldn't try it, but there are other things we should do as well.
Okay.
And I guess going back to that conversation, it's, it's, it's the amount of time in that week of conferences that we're gonna ask teachers to work. That's the part. So, they can be available for parents in the evening, but there's, they have quite a few parents, right? So there's more than just an evening's worth of conferences. So we have five days of teaching, then a few evenings of working. That, that's challenging. We want, we want them to be at the top of their game when they're in front of the students. And I think by setting aside the time for the conferences, they can spend the time in their right minds with the parents, and then come back to class in their right minds with the students, that's most beneficial. So that's why we have the conference days, and it's in the contract. But the other thing is, the other thing is the December 23rd. I thought this started with the December 23rd, which is out of the ordinary, but I hearken back to my days when, during the oil crisis, when I was in school, and we got days off because they didn't wanna open the buildings up for, and heat them. And here, it's not that, but it could be a little bit of that, but also it's one day.
It would be silly.
It's one day, and we're gonna have everybody come in on the Monday before the, it doesn't make a lot of sense.
If you don't have, you know, school on Monday, you have, you also capture that weekend into the whole deal, so it's kind of nice.
And, so that's the December 23rd.
This is the, we had this discussion, right? This is like the longest, right? Because the following year, Christmas would be on a Thursday, so you probably would open up Monday, Tuesday.
Yes.
Yeah.
So this is kind of the longest winter break that the calendar would have.
Let's make the most of it.
Let's make the most of it, right.
Although, if you move the, if New Year's is on Thursday, do you open up for that Friday?
If New Year's is on a Thursday, you open Friday, and that's.
So it goes the other way, too.
So maybe, yeah, it goes the other way. So maybe the, maybe the next two years are longer. So maybe the, maybe the next two years are longer, that's possible.
So those are the main, those are the significant pieces. June 15th would be the last day of school with no snow days. June 22nd would be the day with excellent, if there were five snow days. I guess we'll hopefully successfully implement the Husky Home Learning Day, it will be somewhere in the middle, probably the 17th or 18th. But as you said, it came out of the committee, I put it on here, you've had a chance, but the teachers haven't had a chance.
Okay, so we will take their recommendation and vote it next time, right?
Thank you.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Sorry about that.
All right, update on school budget, this is the upcoming budget, right?
Yes.
What I can report is that the Finance Committee's guideline budget came out right before Christmas and they reduced our request by $75,000. We, at the same time, around the same time, we received notice of a new arrival student who will require a residential out-of-district, no, not residential, just out-of-district, which is another expense that we had not anticipated although we had a placeholder in for that. So that puts a lot of strain on our budgetary plans. What we, how we responded with is a request that, well, in companion with that, we've agreed to some reductions in the capital spend plan, right? Doing some things internally and deferring some items. And so what we proposed to the Finance Committee is that they take some of that savings that's in the capital budget and put it into the operating budget to give us some relief on that cut that they would like to see. Did you prepare the capital, the revised capital budget? Okay, so we're slated to meet with them on Monday and present that.
So the longer caps, however, hadn't closed out their decisions and was, was starting at a point that was much higher than guideline, so even schools scaling back...
Well, we can only scale back what we can scale back.
I understand, but...
We're, we're proposing a $50,000 reduction of what we asked. Now, maybe you're going to say...
I'm sure that helps.
A hundred thousand, but, you know, we can only do, you guys are not in the same time, right? The FINCOM's a little ahead of you, I guess, right? Because they've got a guideline.
What do you mean by they're, they're ahead?
They've already come out with a guideline, you're saying you haven't?
No, we have.
Oh, you have?
We have, we have, we're, 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 we're looking at it and it adds up to, you know, a hundred and some odd thousand more than...
You're right, I don't know, I don't know the answer to what you're saying, so all, all we're saying is that we got kind of a double whammy, that we got a haircut from the Finance Committee and we learned of a new expense that we had planned on. And in combination, that's, you know, $175,000, that's a lot. So we're trying to work with the Finance Committee to see if there's some medium ground and we'll go and so will every other department that got a cut, so I don't know how that will end up. But that's where things stand, there's really not much else to say. We'll present our information Monday and, you know, they'll consider it and I, I don't know. I don't know, anything else, anybody want to add?
No, right, right now we're working out our budget and as we presented to the FINCOM at that time, we, we presented as streamlined budgets we possibly could going in, knowing that we had these other expenses that we hadn't accounted for.
Right, yeah.
And it's going to be difficult to find that $75,000 we started with.
Got you.
So we'll be needing to talk Monday.
Would you like to add something?
No, I, I have a request, I have noticed that in the school committee agendas, we have the budget conversation, I did not see any materials to deal with it, either in the December 12ths or...
Didn't, didn't we have a budget hearing where we presented?
In the practice.
Oh, it wasn't on the pack, the hearing is separate. The hearing is separate, it's not part of the school committee meeting, actually. The, the school committee meeting is separate from the budget hearing.
Yes, yes, no, I understand, but you didn't...
But isn't, wasn't the presentation of the budget hearing a public, that was made public to the mosquito?
Well, I, I've already asked...
Isn't it on the website? Christine, is that in the question?
I don't, I don't know.
If it's not on the website, we should make sure that the budget is presented and the hearing is on the website.
And that going forward, in advance of the budget hearing, that the, the budget presentation is available as well.
I agree.
Good idea.
Okay, good idea. Okay, very good. So policies, do you want to first talk about the policy of policies or is that for...
The policy of policies. Yeah, we'll, we'll, I'll share that with you at the end of the week and then we'll talk about that.
Okay, all right. Well, we're taking up your suggestion, Melinda, to try to, we're not doing a very good job of it this spring, but to try to...
Get a longer view of the snow work again.
Get a longer view of the policies, at least by next fall. My commitment is at least by next fall, we'll say, these are the policies we're going to review in this school year.
So, okay, along with that, we started the process of identifying the policies we're going to review and as we did that process, we realized our policies are organized in such a convoluted way that we really needed to streamline the organization of the policies. So we've done some streamlining of the organization of policies and we'll, we'll talk about that further at the next meeting. I'll, I'll share that as we go forward and that's where we are.
It's going to be good though.
It's going to be great.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
All right, what we also have done, kind of as a practice, I would say, in the last couple of meetings and going forward, is to provide both the present Carlisle School Committee policy and the closest equivalent out of MASC, sort of the cheaper way of using it.
It saves us $15,000 from doing it.
Right, right. So, so we have those two, sometimes it's pretty much the same. So I guess, does any, I mean, I, does anybody want to take the lead on the first one, which is buildings and ground safety and security?
I don't know if you had a chance to read it, so we reviewed this with the admin team and after reviewing the building, ground, safety and security, we have no proposed changes to what exists presently, but you may want to read that open.
The, the one that exists in the CPS?
Yes, ours, yes.
Yes, right.
You can see it's, it's pretty similar.
They're pretty similar, yeah.
I have, I have no particular questions. Others?
No. I mean, I like this one, the, is this the Mass Association School Police?
The EC one, yes.
Yeah. And I just, I thought that we could move over a couple of the paragraphs from ours to this one and adopt this one.
I'm saying, you're saying, move...
They're, but they're pretty similar, I mean, I just don't want to make it too worded.
You want to use some of the MASC words?
Yeah, I like this one, the MASC.
So you'd like to see MASC as the model and just import some?
Yeah, because I think, you know, some of the things are not necessary to have. It says the public school buildings and grounds are one of the greatest investments of Carlisle, it's given the best interest, I mean, obviously, I mean, the, the first paragraph of the, this one is better.
You like EC, yeah.
More specific. And supervision over the care and safety of property used by the school department will be the general responsibility superintendent and they will work with other municipal departments, including, I would add here, including fire, you know, equipment and systems.
I don't know if you want to add those, because then you've limited yourself to those.
And if you're going to...
Well, you're going to say including.
Et cetera, you know, yeah, I mean, I would...
If you're going to be adding other departments, if you want to...
Well, that's what ours says right now, ours says right now that...
Ours says we are working with fire and...
Fire hazard, yeah, I mean...
If we're going to be mentioning other departments, is, is the town municipal facilities department worth mentioning?
Yeah, probably.
Yeah, so this is what they say in the MASC one, they will work with other municipal departments.
That should probably be in any of them.
If we're going to start listing departments, I would suggest putting that in.
Yes, yeah, that's in this one, that's why I like that too. And then I would just keep this paragraph and this one.
Don't say this, you have to tell me.
Yeah, I mean, I can, you know, draft a...
You mean the last two.
I think the, the broad view is whether we essentially start from the MASC policy and tailor it to Carlisle or do we import little pieces of MASC into the Carlisle policy or do we just say, no, we like the Carlisle policy and we'll mix up weeks.
I like the MASC and then I think we import some of the things here that relate to how we secure our buildings, because I, they don't really talk about how they secure the buildings in the MASC one, but we talk about access to school buildings and grounds, outside of regular school hours, it'll be limited to personnel and where it requires a key control system established, you know, and then protective devices, it mentions protective devices designed to be used as safeguards against illegal entry vandalism will be installed when appropriate to the individual situation, so that we should keep as well.
Okay, I have no opinions.
If we're on, if we're into protective devices, safeguards against vandalism, are we into security camera policy?
We, we have that separately? Yeah, well, that's what's being mentioned here. You can refer to the, to that broader policy if you want to know more about it, so that we can say that, in other words.
Well, what, what is our calendar for security camera?
I think that one wasn't up, actually, this year. It might be still...
Oh, from looking at that policy on security cameras? Yeah, because that directly dovetails with this and we've had some questions in addition years about what is the role of interior cameras for protecting kids and faculty and simply punted and said, yeah, we've got to talk about that. Okay, when?
We can put it on the agenda for a conversation, I just don't, we can put it on the agenda for a school committee discussion. I just don't, it's not something where external cameras may have, we may have been motivated to put those in because we saw a need for them. I don't think we see a need for the interns for cameras as an administrative team and possibly faculty, but as a school committee, we can have that conversation.
A few years ago, whose voice from the administration, that there was a need. That may have changed, but I'd like to understand how this works.
So we, we'll put that on the agenda for the conversation, because we have had with the team and the team includes by a chief, police chief, that margin of distinction.
So what, I've lost track of this. What are we saying here? Are we going to take this up in conjunction with a security camera policy or are we going to take up a security camera policy separately?
I would like us to take up a security camera policy. I'm okay with doing it separately, I think it would be smart if this referenced that.
Well, certainly we'll reference it, but do you think we should wait on this to have that or can we...
I don't think we have to wait.
Okay. So where else, where are you two guys on whether we ought to just build, let Melinda build up the MASC policy, tailor it?
I think it's a good idea.
You prefer that one?
Yeah, because I think she brings up some good points, that we have some stuff in there that's not the MASC policy, so...
No, but the, the core, you can just start with that as the model and edit it.
Yeah, yeah.
You support that one?
Yeah.
And Josh?
In principle, I support it. I, I take a look here at what we're trying to accomplish with the policy and keep that in mind as you, as you draft.
Okay, so I guess you have the homework to draft a revised policy?
Sure.
And, and send it back?
Okay.
And I, and we can decide next month whether it's, we, we probably at that point can vote on it, but may not. Okay, very good. The next one is the emergency closing policies and, and they are fairly similar. Anybody want to, you want to start it, Jim?
Again, no recommendations to change.
Another would stick with the Carlisle.
Yeah, as we viewed it, it didn't seem to be anything, it stood out to us as problematic.
Anybody else? You like the MASC?
No, I think I just had comments in the second paragraph at the end, we referenced students and personnel in the first paragraph, the second one, we should also say that making decisions close to school superintendent will consider those factors relating to fundamental concern for the safety and health of the children and personnel.
And staff.
Uh-huh. And then in the last paragraph, the superintendent will weigh factors, take action, students, parents and staff will be informed early in each school year of the procedures that will be used to notify them in case of emergencies. Should we just list the vehicles for, right in the policy of how we're doing that? You know, what are the ways that you can get that information?
This, I, I prefer that we assign the superintendent the, the job of coming up with those and distributing them as opposed to us on a multi-year basis trying to...
So then based on this policy, we'll be distributing information at the beginning of the year or at the relevant time when we think school closings might be imminent of how we'll be notifying people of school closings.
Yeah, I think so. The, the MASC policy also adds, when schools are closed for emergency reasons, staff members will comply with school committee policies for reporting to work. Do we have such a policy? Or is it just implied that if the school's closed, it's closed?
Wait, what is it?
The MASC policy adds to...
That sounds...
With...
Do we have a school committee policy on reporting for work?
I don't believe we do have a school committee policy in compliance.
So in other words, if you decide to close the school, you're closing schools, there's no...
No, because everyone's in a different situation.
Not everyone.
But we have 180-day faculty, we have 185-day faculty, we have full-year faculty, so everybody's in a different space.
Right, but if you decide it's not...
Sometimes I may close schools, but the offices may be open.
So this policy...
Or the facilities people need to come in.
So then you probably do need to reference that here if there's not a separate...
So here's a sentence in the MASC one that says superintendent has the responsibility to see that as much of the administrative supervisory and operational activity is continued as may be possible. We could, we could adopt that sentence?
Yeah, I guess, I guess we're, I would just say we're in this, as we, in my experience, less has been more for the policy. So I think while it's in the MASC policy, we can put it in this policy and what we do is, we follow those procedures internally anyway, so we can, we can put it in if you want to put it in the policy.
Is there a, there's not a staff policy?
On...
On school closing?
There's not a policy, but there's procedures, so with the office staff, like we have a group tech, so if, if school's canceled, but everyone's going to be coming in at 10 o'clock, then I'll say, well, there's no school, but the building will be open and if you can make it in, make it in, if you can't make it in, you're taking a, you're taking a vacation, a personal day. But then there's other days where it's like, school is closed, don't come in, it's not a vacation, personal day, the building is closed because we're not open.
As a practice, you're actually making that call anyway, just as it is stated here, you're...
Yes.
You're making the call, so...
Okay.
So we can either put it in the policy or...
I hadn't even considered that. If the children aren't here, if the students aren't here, do the teachers come anyway?
The teachers do not, the teachers are on a 185-day contract.
Right.
And that aligns with 180 days that the students are here, but other people are here year-round, so like if the teachers are off...
Like the registrar.
Yeah.
So...
Nancy Anderson for sale.
Nancy Anderson!
Yeah, it's super...
Okay.
It's okay.
You know, I'm fine, I mean, I guess it's, it's not clear that it's two different things, but I guess I don't, it seems fine. I don't, I don't have it. So what is the, what's the consensus here, just as is is okay?
I don't feel strongly about it one way or the other. I, I, I question what the utility of the policy is. If, if we simply say, Jim, figure it out, close the schools you need to, tell who needs Close the schools you need to, tell who needs to be here. What are we trying to accomplish with the policy? If somebody's gonna call Jim and say, Jim, you're not following the policy. Get with the program? I don't see it happening.
But that, I mean, I think you could apply that to about 90% of policies reviewed. We could just say, here are the duties of superintendent and list things that previously were policies and just a list of...
In some cases, for legal reasons, we do... In some cases, for legal reasons, we need a policy.
I get it.
In some cases, for quasi-legal reasons, as in residency. We need a policy that's a way of standard by which people can look at and say, it's not arbitrary. In this case, how does it help us?
I think it's fine the way it is, because basically what it's saying to anybody who wants to know is, that's the guy making the decisions. These are the kinds of decisions he's making.
Okay, good enough. All right, next one is facility naming policy. Melinda?
I didn't really have any comments on this one.
I have to say, I would like the preamble, the first paragraph from the MASC to be our first paragraph.
Okay.
It's all about inclusion, you know?
So this is in the policy, Josh?
Okay, which parts of it exactly? Because those are the ones we should focus on.
No, I think the idea, and I'm not being... I think the idea, in other situations, in other times and places, when things happen, people are motivated by things that happen. And all of a sudden, they wanna do things in a moment. And it's not easy to put the brakes on something that someone wants to do in a moment when people are emotional about doing this. And that's when you need to refer to a policy that says, we have a policy. It is a process. And as much as we feel it, this is not one at this time.
Does that make any sense? So, yes, although I prefer our policy to the MASC one.
But I like that.
But you... The preamble?
Yeah.
The reason I say that is this makes it with the school committee as opposed to a multi-sided political argument between school councils, PTOs, school committees.
But we can consult.
So the question is, should we add the first paragraph? Or is that just motherhood, you know?
I think it sort of gives you the motivation behind the policy, which is we're not trying to leave someone out. We're trying to include people in the decision.
Good, I'm fine. What do you think?
I'm okay with the policy the way it is. But one question, though, is chairperson a word? Assistant chairman?
Chairman should be chair. Just chair, should be chair. And while we're on that, in that region of the policy, Nancy, should be individuals who wish to have the school committee consider naming or renaming a facility should make such requests, not their request. To the chair.
Last paragraph.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah, I don't have an either way.
So I'm hearing not... I'm not hearing much appetite for adding the motherhood.
That's fine.
Okay. Okay, very good. That's it for the MASC factors and policies. We're doing well on time. Thank you. Communications and correspondence?
Such communications and correspondence. There's a number of them. MASC season screenings from our attorney.
Oh, that's so small.
One of you can have the MASC calendar.
Hang on.
I'm already using mine.
And then we're not sure what these are, but their correspondence is from...
You know? No, it's not.
You're not addressed to them.
We got a ton of these things too, Joe. Okay.
You have mail.
Okay.
I'd have passed that along.
You'll need to look at it.
How about your report?
Oh, my report? All right, so we talked about the finance committee town solace involving policies. Couple of things that happened in the past. I know it seems like a long time ago since before the break, but we got a third grade TDX 3D showcase, which was outstanding. Parents came in to see the students with a challenge with solving problems and then designing solutions to these problems. Then printing up 3D models of their solutions, which was great. As you can imagine, the end of December, we had incredible chorus concerts. And our chorus performed at the Council on Aging Luncheon. Sixth grade had a visit from author Rob O'Yea. Thank you to the PTO for making that possible. The second and fifth grade buddies collected a record-setting 220 pairs of PJs in their pajama drive this year to help students with children in need, which was great. Shout out to Mrs. Venaria in our crowd. Early act students collected over $700 during the parent-teacher conferences to support the Stella Rosie Foundation Help Children in Uganda. And then we have things coming up. We have our students gonna be trying out for MMGA festival auditions this weekend. Science Bob, the PTO is bringing Science Bob to do an elementary and middle school presentation. Middle school interim reports are going out the 18th. The 21st, we have no school for Martin Luther King Day, the holiday. And then on the 22nd, we have an early release. There may have been an early version of the school lunch calendar that went out with the 22nd saying no school. So if anyone had that early version, it is just an early release date. Our CPAC is up and running again. They had a meeting on the 23rd. On February 1st, our elementary students will have the opportunity to celebrate Chinese New Year at the Chinese New Year Festival, which they're gonna have something in school. And then on February 2nd, the entire Carlisle community have the opportunity to enjoy the Chinese New Year Festival from 1 through 8 to 4. And then on February 8th, our middle school students will have a presentation on digital citizenship and cyber safety presented by the Middlesex Partnership for Youth. So that's just a quick update of some of the things going on before and after the break, in addition to all those other things we spoke about.
Is it... How long is the digital citizenship workshop?
I think it's gonna be 50 minutes.
Is that part of an ongoing thing or is it like a...
It's part of a... It's a combination. It's part of our process, our program to... We have a digital citizenship curriculum. And we're working, I think Nick was in meeting with the teams this week, and looking to see what we're covering and what we need to cover and finding ways to get into classrooms. And bringing in presenters is another way to cover some of those standards that need to be covered.
Is it for the whole middle school, the 538?
Yes. So it's just part... The messages are always important for our middle schools to have as they navigate social media and all those other bases.
Okay. Members in committee reports? Josh?
Long-term cap hasn't met since our last meeting.
Okay.
It is the facilities committee has many times. We have asked the Board of Selectmen to appoint a gentleman who passed our interview process as the facilities manager, facilities department manager. We have selected and negotiated a contract with TV Architects for the renovation of the police station. And we have dual bad news today that the underwater underground tanks removed from the fire department parking lot. We do have a situation of groundwater contamination there that needs to be remediated. Furthermore, it appears that we may not have state coverage for that remediation as the tanks may not have been on their goal list.
How do tanks get on the goal list?
This is... Information is only a few hours old and I'm not at the center of it, but it's bad news.
Do you have a sense of how much money's gonna be?
Well, you dig until you stop getting contamination.
Is that a six-figure thing or five?
It starts at five.
And that would be a warrant article for this round?
We'll see. We've got some facilities money that was allocated to other projects that we're gonna be using for it. We haven't met with the Selectmen to talk about what to do. We haven't even met as a group to consider what to do. But this is new news on that situation. At the DPW, we abandoned the idea of putting solar on the roof of the DPW shed as the shed does not meet current building code even without the solar panels. So that's not happening. But we did commission a complete site survey delineation of wetlands to see if the upland part of that property could be used by the town for other reasons, potentially for DPW. We have an issue there because not only is the roof not meet code, but we did a test of the septic system, it doesn't work either. There are limited places on that property where we can... Where we can cite a... At DPW, there are limited places where we can cite a septic system. We're looking at, what about a temporary trailer with a holding tank? So it's getting fun.
You got all the glamour jobs.
Yeah.
Isn't the... Wasn't a solar array one of the...
It sounds to me like this is a different solar...
This was on the DPW garage. This is not transfer station.
Oh, okay.
So that would be something that, you know, the town owned, right?
Well, we probably would lease the roof space, but it's completely different. Because there are tax advantages for private entities to own and operate solar that the town doesn't have. But we won't even do that because we have to... The roof won't support it, and the engineer we hired said you'd be better off just raising the building than trying to...
Put something on the key.
Yeah.
They usually ignore those.
Okay, Christine, do you...
I think for the region... For the region, I guess I'll just say that where they're looking to address the parking issue at the high school. And part of that was a study that they did about the entire campus. And so they will be moving... We will be moving forward at the town meetings to put warrants in about the parking.
But it would... And was there some talk of reducing the amount though?
There are two.
Yeah, the dollar bill, right, yeah.
Well...
It seemed like there was a big bill and then people come up.
It's just that there are a couple of options of what they could put in. And when we got the first go-around about what the ideas could be for the entire campus, they had to re-figure the numbers for us when they got into more detail, so. I don't...
Did they take anything out of their request or was it still the same request?
No, they didn't.
Okay, and what about the budget? Was there some discussion in the operating budget request with Carlisle Concord, FinCon and Carlisle as well? Was there any negotiating at that?
Not to my knowledge at this point. I haven't been to the Concord meetings, but I have a school committee meeting next week.
Susan, do you know anything about that?
I think it... It's the meeting we have on Monday. That's the school.
So it remains at the 5% or what is it?
5.63, I think is the number.
And FinCon, that's gonna be part of the FinCon meeting on Monday.
Right, they are going to... That's true. They are going to Monday meeting.
So the Monday meeting, Laurie, the superintendent, will be there and Melissa will be there.
But to your understanding, the Concord FinCon is not pushing back on that?
Uh, no.
No. Cool.
What?
They're fine with it.
No, it was fine.
They've got growth in town.
They do have growth, yeah, okay. Well, okay, we know we're there, we know that. Okay, anything else from region? Melinda, you already talked about solar, you have any other?
I have nothing to report on that one.
Okay. Okay, I think that's it then. Quiet period. It has only been like three weeks since we had a meeting and it was all vacation, holiday time. All right, warrants.
Hopefully, I received all the warrants after the agenda was already posted, so I will just read what I have. Accounts payable warrant number 4419 for $86,242.92. Payroll warrant number 4219 for $386,672.5. Accounts payable warrant number 4719 for $89,247.51. And payroll warrant number 4519 for $344,804.59.
Great, very good. All right, action items. I'm gonna vote a few things here. The first one is to vote to approve the CEF grants that they presented last month in our underpact. Motion to approve.
So move.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Christine.
To move with appreciation?
With appreciation, that's what I'm saying. All in favor?
Aye.
So move. Next up?
Was there any comment? Was there any comment?
I think it was appreciated. Next one is the bullying prevention policy. Discussed and include cyberbullying now, I think? Is that pretty true? Motion to approve?
Second.
Further discussion?
The only question I had was if we wanted to... It looks like we have something repetitive. Did anybody else notice that or?
It's so long.
It's so long, I lost track.
So you can see... Yeah, it starts here again. It's kind of repeating what was up here.
The fringe on the rights thing? Which part of it? Sorry, I'm not...
Yeah, it's right here. Creates a hostile environment, it fringes on the right. It's all up here.
Oh, I see.
So I think if you just, you know, you're now talking about...
I have a question about the interpretation. Under reported, first paragraph. Students who believe they are a target of bullying are obligated to report the incidents. The target, however, shall not be subject to discipline for failing to report bullying. What does it mean to have an obligation?
Where are you?
Reporting.
Reporting, first paragraph. How does one interpret that? One has an obligation, but one's not obligated.
I'd have to look up the definition of obligation. But I...
I would say that it's their option to report.
What does obligation mean?
It's one of those words you use so many times, all of a sudden I think it clearly...
Depends on what it is.
An act of course of action to which a person is morally or legally bound, a duty or commitment.
Yeah, so we would hope that they would report this act of bullying.
But they don't have to.
Why not just say that?
But like, if they don't, it's not...
But why, I mean...
I don't know, I'm trying to interpret the language from this state. But I think they... I think what they're saying is bullying is reprehensible, and we do not want that to take place. So if you're aware of someone bullying, but even if you're the victim, you should bring it to the state. But if you don't because you're the victim, then we understand.
I see your point, but the reason I think it's said this way is because they lump all the other people in there. So students who believe they are a target of bullying, it goes on to say, students who observe an act of bullying or who have reasonable grounds to believe that these behaviors are taking place are obligated. And I...
You should say, maybe we should just say, all right, like it says below, or maybe it should be... You've got a sentence that says, parents or guardians, parents or guardians or members of the community are encouraged to report an incident of bullying as soon as possible. Maybe that should be as soon as observed, but I mean, wouldn't it all be the same? And then there's school staff as well, so shouldn't everybody report bullying when they observe it? Everybody should.
Parents, guardians, member of the community are asked to report. Instead of encouraged, it's a more direct... Are asked to report an incident of bullying as soon as possible.
I think the school staff one is pretty direct, right? You see it, you've got to report.
Right.
But parents are encouraged and students are, it says obligated, but maybe it should be encouraged. Maybe that should be encouraged too. I don't know.
We listed it directly from the state language, so we can modify it as we see fit.
And you wanna...
So what this is saying is that sentence of being obligated, they have three categories of students here. The target, those observing, or those have reasonable grounds to believe that it's taking place are obligated. And then it just gives you a pass here for the target shall not be subject to discipline for failing to report. Obviously, there are... What does that mean?
Maybe just should... Maybe we should say they're encouraged and get rid of the...
Are students the only ones obligated? It just says in the...
No, the staff is required. I mean, it's...
So it says here, you know what, you're obligated, but each school shall have a means for anonymous reporting. So I guess when I read this, you know, and I thought, wow, you know? Then it addresses immediately afterwards that, you know, each school shall have a means for anonymous reporting of incidents and no formal disciplinary action will be taken solely on the basis of an anonymous report.
That's a stupid paragraph.
So we should rewrite this section. Sounds like we should.
The paragraph that was read is... You made a comment, Christine.
No, that's all right.
There was a under句, Rob.
In practice, that's a good paragraph. People need to know you can submit something anonymously, but people should also know, we're not gonna give anyone a consequence.
Right, but that sounds...
Based solely.
Yeah, based solely.
Actually, I think, yeah, I think that's okay. I think that part's okay. But I think that paragraph... So there's one, two, three, four, five paragraphs in this section. I think one, four, and five should somehow be combined. This is the various obligations to report. And then there's a... Then there's a separate paragraph that Christine doesn't like, which is a means of anonymous reporting. And there's the statement that if you make a false accusation, you're in trouble, right? So various... If you see it, you should report it. You don't have to, but you should. And if you don't wanna give your name, there should be a way to do that. And if you do it and it's false and you knowingly did it falsely, that's a bad thing. And that's it.
Do you really think we should pass off of the language of obligation?
I do, especially when coupled with the false accusation. Because if you're compelled to say something, but endangered by...
Saying something.
Saying something, that's a potentially uneasy thought to me.
Would any teachers like to weigh in on this? There's been a lot of... There's a lot of... You know, we spent a lot of time on those bases and all this.
Matt is here too, he's worked on this too.
As well, so there's... Happy to take in.
Yeah, we can talk about policy, but then we can also talk about our procedures, what I do at an administrative level.
Sure.
So this is kind of getting to that level, I feel, of how you do your job versus what the law says around bullying at the state level.
So what... Are you saying, Matt, that we should stay at a higher plane here? Just say, you know, people should be encouraged to report and say...
I think you may want to run this by an attorney counsel. Because you could open yourself up to liability for the lawsuit, right?
A lawsuit about somebody reporting something.
For any aspect of the bullying.
Yeah. Because it... Just because it's a case of law.
Well, I mean, one reason we use the MASC template is they vet everything.
And if that's been vetted through their...
Is this a way of MASC?
This is their template?
Yes, this is right from the state.
Okay, then that's...
Okay, then that's been vetted by attorney.
All right.
If the language is in there for a reason.
Yeah, no, no, you're right, that's a good point.
That's a good point.
All right, maybe we just accept it.
Yeah.
Okay. And then back to your question, was it the one they, we already lost track, there's some redundancy in here?
Yeah, but we're just gonna, I mean, it's not that.
Did we really lift this? It's pretty early in the year.
So, yeah, we went, we had, we had our own policy, which was lighter, we discussed that at the last meeting.
Okay.
And we said, why don't we go with the one that is.
So let's, let's, let's try a vote here to see if we can get this thing hanging out. Anybody want to vote to approve this policy, which is a clone of the MASC? If there's no appetite, we'll just table it and we'll rework it, but we should either vote to approve it or we should take an action to rework it.
Do people still have questions about it that would prevent us from?
My, my view is it's, it's poorly worded and wordy.
It is wordy.
I understand the point, the safe harbor in MASC.
Yeah.
Just because MASC does it doesn't mean it's well done.
Would you like to take a draft?
No.
If you take a draft.
You have to rephrase that, David.
No, if you want to take a crack at drafting it, we will run it by council, we'll spend a little money, but while we clean up policy, I'm okay with that, but I don't think just saying no is an acceptable criticism.
Well, if, if, if there's not a will to pass it as it is, I don't know if there is or isn't a will, but if there isn't a will, then we'll take it back and see if it gets streamlined a little. It wants to be more than much.
Let's find out.
Get outside of the law.
Let's find out, I'll make a motion to accept this policy, the bullying policy as written.
I'll second it.
I would hate to have a three.
Yeah.
I won't vote.
All in favor of accepting the policy? Or any further discussion? All in favor of accepting the policy as written? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So moved. We can always look at it again, you know?
I'm not going to stand away from progress, I just.
Yeah, no, I understand.
All right. School attendance, let's try to get it done by now.
Everybody should help, that's it.
School attendance, we have, for Carlisle, there's no particular MASC policy there.
We looked at that one, we looked at it last night.
Oh yeah, we talked about this, right? Yep. So bring the packet and we'll refer to this stuff if you should.
Are we, are we voting on this one tonight too?
Yeah. Any comments?
I, in the second paragraph, students may be excused temporarily from school and then there's listed reasons. Is medical appointments a reason? I mean, I, that's not in there, but.
Where, where are you?
In the second paragraph, therefore, students may be excused temporarily from school attendance for the following reasons, illness or quarantine, bereavement or serious illness in family, weather so inclement as to endanger the health of child.
Who would you recommend that him?
Or are medical appointments a reason for?
I mean, there's lots of.
I think that's good, no obligation.
Okay, some medical appointments, okay?
Um, do you, do you want to limit it to medical, dental, legal?
Yeah, good point. What we call that?
Professional appointments.
I mean, really, if a parent says, I need to take my kid out to do something, isn't that okay? As long as it's not a law.
We get, well.
Now we know why it's not.
So there's two ways, like, do we think it's okay? We don't think everything's okay. Is there a consequence? There are necessarily consequences. Right, so if I was to take my child to Disney World.
Why don't people do that? They take my own vacation.
People do that. People do that, but the school isn't endorsing that, we're not saying that that's.
No, but I mean, I mean, really, why don't we just say that students may be excused temporarily from school attendance when parents in their discretion view it necessary?
Because I think, I think, I think we keep it like, we, we say these are acceptable, these are excused. We have, we have attendance, which is if you miss. If you miss school, it's listed as unexcused, like, it can be unexcused, like, you're not here, but it's not excused, we didn't feel it was an excusable reason.
You're getting counted on the number of unexcused. The, the only point is here that I, you know, I take my kid to the orthodontist and you wouldn't believe how many times they have to adjust those things.
No, I believe, I have a.
A dental appointment would be excused, like, if you bring a note from your doctor.
That's the only reason my, I put in here about the medical appointment.
Now we get to the, I mean, were we procedurally based, we have to list all the reasons?
Can we just put medical appointments in there? Is that, that's a thing, right, that we can take our kids to medical appointments?
Yeah, I guess I'm, I'm thinking, should we, should we phrase it in a way that says, you know, including these reasons, there may be reasons that we did include, but these are the key reasons.
A word, it says illness or quarantine, you might just be able to have a word in there that.
Well, you, actually, that's a good point. Isn't the rule when a child has a certain fever, they're, they're not supposed to come in, right?
Well, that's illness.
We want them to go, but they were not allowed to.
No, but you're right, medical appointments, legal appointments.
So that's an illness.
Those would be included, but they're not listed.
Why is weather there? Isn't weather covered by any other policy?
Well, this is, this might be more if like.
Local weather.
If we have school, but a tree fell on your driveway and you can't get out and like, if you call us and say, I can't get out.
But are we getting kind of silly here?
We are really.
I mean, the whole thing is.
No, but I want to take my kids.
Don't we trust the parents to get their kids to school most of the time?
So it's not about, it's not about, see, I do think, it's not about trust, but it's about the school. And the district is setting a level of expectation.
Yeah.
And really like, yeah, we do expect.
Well, but you say that in the first paragraph, right?
Yes.
One of which is to, so.
So beyond, just so we're clear, when you take your child on the five-day vacation, like, the school isn't endorsing that. We, and this is, this is the only way we let parents know that we're not in favor of that.
Well, then why don't we just say that? Say, the school, the school requests of parents that they make every reasonable effort to ensure that their child attends and they understand when they can't do it.
I think there, there are two sides of that, though, and I don't leave this stuff too much on Jim's toes here. Part of it is to what extent do we condone it? The other, to what extent we want to bend over backwards to support it?
But I don't see either of those things.
There are different issues.
But neither of those issues is here. Here is a policy that says it should, I mean, a thought is, the policy should say, like, a broad policy, the school, parents should make every reasonable effort to make sure their child attends school.
Well, what the policy doesn't.
And there are, we understand that there are circumstances such as illness that where it's either not recommended or not practical, okay, but you, you, the policy is, you should, all other things being equal, you should try to get your child.
Yeah, but some you could say reasonable is that Disney's cheaper the week before.
Yeah.
Well, look, there's, there's certainly laws that, around school attendance.
Yeah.
So, you know, I mean, that's all part of this policy and that's part of the consideration. It's not specifically, you know, it's referenced here. I, my, I'm a little bit sorry that I brought it up, but my only point was, you know, that medical appointments, it seems like one of the, you know, one of the reasons that.
I think it's worth including, absolutely.
So we want to stick with this frame, but just add some more specifics?
Medical.
Medical, dental, professional.
Medical, what, okay, medical, dental.
If they have a psychoport, it counts too, it's not.
That's medical.
That's behavioral, that's a behavioral.
Health-related appointments.
Or legal.
Health-related.
No, professional appointments, it's probably.
Okay.
So what are we saying, professional appointments?
Health and professional.
Medical is a profession, right, so professional.
And then I didn't know if we really need this paragraph.
Which one is?
It's a policy, so a student's understanding of the importance of day-to-day work is an important factor in the shaping of his or her character. Parents can help their children by not allowing them to miss school needlessly.
Yeah, but I think, actually, to me, that is more to the point I was getting at. That is the thing we want to emphasize. Kids should go to school, parents should encourage them, that's the main thing. You can't predict whether, you know, kid has an appointment with, I don't.
Well, I'm not saying I disagree with it, I'm just saying.
If a parent didn't value school.
Are they reading the policy?
They would change their mind when they read that.
Why do we have policies?
No, I think what David is saying, though, is that if you're saying to your kid, well, we're going to go to Disney the week earlier, because it's cheaper, you are not giving them an important, a message of importance.
So, so what are we doing, wagging our finger at them? I mean.
Well, but you, no, but you're sort of playing, you're, you're playing devil's advocate of things, you, you've been on the other side of that argument, where you said, we should have a broad thematic policy so that when we need to, like, perhaps when, you know, Ms. Stack is confronted with a child who's consistently missing because the parents don't seem to, I don't want to care, but they don't seem to emphasize if the child has to go.
If there's no cheap or decision behind it, then what is it about?
But there is.
So then maybe, and when I, when I say maybe, like, and I apologize for not knowing the inner workings of everybody's classroom, but if you're in my previous settings, like, in a high school level, yeah, excuse or excuse means a lot, whether you get to make up work or not, whether this is held against you for course credit. So that may be taking place in classrooms, like, if you miss the day and you're, it was just a frivolous day, then A, I may not spend that much time making up, helping you understand that, but you know what I mean, like, going out of my way to get all these assignments, but also give you the opportunity to turn it that way, that gets counted towards your grade. So there, there, and I'm, I'm not that intimately aware of what everyone's practices, but that is a practice, and that's why if you look on our attendance, you're listed according to whether it's excused or unexcused. So the teachers have that data on a student's absence.
All right, so what's on the table is to add professional appointments to the list of excusable things.
I move to accept the policy as amended.
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Just think of it like the same fifteen thousand.
Finally, non-discrimination, non-discrimination to a qualified individual with a disability. And then it says, policy pertaining, why are there two titles in this again, this policy?
Do we compare? That's a one.
That's how it's written in MASC language, world? Okay. Again, that's one where I think we want to stay pretty much in this one.
This is very much a legal.
Now, entertaining motion to accept.
So moved.
I didn't get to look up this word, do you?
Early, that means in, in voice, that means like by ear.
Ear.
Hearing.
Okay.
Okay. Motion's on table, requires a second.
Oh, second.
Any discussion, like that? All in favor of accepting?